Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Eric Giddens. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jenny Leeper. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to our annual meeting, the approval of the depository bank and maximum deposit resolutions. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve fiscal year 2019 depository banks and maximum deposit resolutions for the Cedar Falls Community School District as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Sasha. Do we have any questions or concerns regarding the motion?
I would just comment to the board that there's only a couple of minor changes from last year. You'll note that we're requesting Collins Community Credit Union to have that limit raised from 20 million to 35 million. And then the other one would be Wells Fargo to do the exact reverse, to go from 35 million to 20 million. Otherwise, all other depository limit requests would remain the same.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug. Moving on now to item B, the appointment of the board secretary. Do I have a motion?
I move to appoint Douglas J. Nevsker as school district secretary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Doug, would you please stand while you receive the oath? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Secretary in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the appointment of authorized school business official, do I have a motion?
Oh, did I get that? I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the appointment of Douglas Nevsker as the authorized school business official for the Cedar Falls Community School District.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Eric Giddens. Any questions or comments? Better not hear any. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Doug, thank you. Thank you for your service and thank you for all you do for the district. Okay. Moving on to our regular business meeting, item A on the agenda now is public comment.
Do not have anybody request a public comment?
All right. Now we're back to the secretary's financial report.
And I guess that's me. So if we can pop them up on the screen, we'll go through them. Just a reminder to the board and everybody that this is as of the end of June, so it's our fiscal year would have concluded. I'll remind you again that these are actual cash position, not accruals. And we go through the month of July and August to work through our accounts payable and our accounts receivable. And when we file the certified annual report in early September, those will have the accrual amounts. And we'll give an updated report either late September or early October. So if we can go through this quick, here's the general fund for the month of June. You can see about 4.2 in and about 4.8 out. Ending balance is just over 11 million, slightly ahead of where we were from a cash position one year ago. And the management fund, $2,700 in, $21,000 out. And so you can see our ending balance was just over $1 million, and that's up a little bit from where we were previously one year ago. Cash-wise, in the local option sales tax fund, you can see $8,200 in. That's all interest for our bonds that we've sold a year ago for our three construction projects. Expenditures, you can see we spent 1.96 million on the three construction projects. So our ending balance is just a little over $9 million. In the statewide sales tax account, revenue just over $1 million. That's a combination of a couple of things. We did receive two payments in June. Again, the state's real good at, for whatever reason, we get two payments one month, none the next. And then the other part of this is we did receive a payment, a reimbursement from the city of Cedar Falls for their portion of the grading work that was associated with Aldrich Elementary. We'll receive an additional reimbursement from the city for their half of the street work. That'll probably be coming here in August or September. And so you can see the expenditures, and again, that is pretty much all tied to either one of the three construction projects, the second of the three payments to the University of Northern Iowa for the new high school site, and then a little bit of work for the new future high school planning that we're working on. And we had the small transfer to Fund 40 for debt service to make sure that we had enough dollars to take care of that. So you can see our ending balance was just over 9 million. And I'll remind everybody that 995,000 of that is restricted. It's not available. And out of that $8 million, that's sitting there, almost $6.5 million is earmarked for the three construction projects.
Okay.
In the physical plant and equipment levy, you can see revenue and expenditures for the month. Some of the expenditures tie with some of our summer projects, as we were able to get a little early jump on a couple of them. So our ending balance is 4,159,000, which is up slightly from where we were a year ago. Physical, excuse me, debt service levy, there you can see the revenue for the month, and then there's that transfer in. And then that was our debt service payment that was due on June 1st. And so we have an ending balance of just a little over $1,400 in the debt service account. Student activity, pretty normal month for June, and you can see our fund balance is down about 55,000 from where we were one year ago. Trust and agency account, again, quiet month with a fund balance of 242,000, it's down slightly from one year ago. Food service account, revenue and expenditures up at the top, total balance of 859,000. That's up about 80,000 from a year ago. We do have some end of year of adjustments that we have to go through with the receivables and payables, so when you see the report in September, the balance won't be that rosy. But from a cash position, that's where we're at as of June 30th. There's the coffee shop count for the students at the high school. You can see where they're at, the end of the year, $6,384. And in the River Hills agency account, we made our one payment out that we had for a balance one month ago. You'll see we ended the year at zero, which is exactly what we're supposed to do. But you will notice in July and August, as the final tuition bills come rolling in for the 2017-18 year school year, you'll see those dollars flow through this count over the next couple of months. And with that, I'd entertain any questions that the board might have.
Any questions for Doug? If not, we will place the secretary's financial report on file for audit. Thank you. Moving on now to item C on the agenda, communications. Janelle Darst.
Yeah, hello. So although it's kind of quiet with things happening in the buildings, there is a lot of activity happening across the district specifically in regards to the construction projects. So I thought it'd be great if we could just share some of the photos of most recent out at Aldrich. These were taken by Doug a couple of weeks ago, so a lot of work's even been done since then. But this is the south entrance, so this will be the location for, oh, I think it's bus drop, bus drop off, sorry. I didn't want to. So this will be where buses will come in to drop off, and then parents will go to the north entrance to drop off kids. So this is that south entrance. This is a courtyard in between the two wings of the building. This is standing within the cafeteria looking towards the gymnasium, so very similar, of course, to some of the other buildings and the elementaries, as far as the way the cafeteria and gym is set up. And then this is the gymnasium looking the opposite direction. This is the first through third grade hallways. You can see there's lots of flooring in, carpet, paint, lockers, lots of work happening out there, day in and day out right now. So we're ready to go for the first day of school. And this is the fourth through sixth grade hallway. I think one of the really neat things about the design of this building is this collaborative space that each of the grade levels have. So this is kind of that collaborative space, one view, and this is, it's dark, it's hard to see, but there's actually, each of the collaborative spaces have those garage doors that will open up that allow the classroom spaces to kind of become one within that collaborative space. And just real quick, for those parents that will have children, starting at Aldrich in the fall, there's going to be a parent teacher organization meeting coming up this week, so this Thursday, and then on Tuesday, July 31st, both at 6:30. And then those meetings are actually going to be held at our administration building. So we really encourage any of those parents, families, to come to help as part of the organization for that parent teacher group. And then this just happened last week, so the portable that was at Southdale to alleviate the overcrowding there was moved to the high school for math classroom space, and it was located really close to the activities entrance. So this is where it's sitting in its new location, and you can see the activity entrance there to the left. So the students will go in and out of the entrance. It's on the lowest level, where we have the art rooms, the weight room, those classrooms, and then, so they'll go in and out of that location to get to those classroom spaces. Couple of other things. So our school registration is now open. All of the parents that have returning students should have received an email to do their registration through their Power School parent portal. If they have any questions or concerns or having challenges, then there is that email and then the phone number that they can contact to get help. Our first day of school is going to be Thursday, August 23rd, and our school supply list, transportation information is all on our website under the Parents tab. We currently have, all of our elementaries now have the same school supply list. So for every grade level across the district, you have the exact same school supplies. So it's just one list. Holmes and Pete also have a school supply list for the junior highs. The high school does not have a specific list, for anyone that's wondering that, but students are basically told to just come that day, and your teachers are going to let you know what you're going to need, but primarily they utilize their Chromebooks. Again, this is all of the district's social media channels, and then just wanted to do a quick announcement as well, that Aldrich just has their Facebook set up, so people can go and like that page, and then that's all of the other building's social media channels. So please like and share so we can get the information out as best as possible. Any questions?
Any questions for Janelle? Thank you. All right. Now we're to item D, the facility update. Doug, are you going to kick us off, or?
I'm going to, I have the honor of introducing Mr. Leeper from Envision Architects, who's going to walk through a brief presentation for us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. So, got it up? There you go. Well, thanks for having us, or me. We want to introduce our team first. We have been working on the idea of what future of education looks like in Cedar Falls at the high school level. And we've assembled a team together with Story Construction, who's going to be helping us with some costing as we look at options. And then David Jakes Designs, who's, David is an independent kind of contractor that we've worked with on several projects, and really talks about the future of education and is really great at kind of engaging students and community as we go through this process. So we're not going to show you any buildings today. It's hard for architects not to start to draw. But we really think that this process is about the future of learning, and that we want to start with that as really the beginning point. So the process that we go through is standard for most of the projects that we work on, and we break them into three phases. One of them is discovery, and then strategy, and then implementation. And discovery, you know, everyone wants to start with strategy, right? Everyone wants to start drawing and saying, okay, what are we going to do? But we really worked hard in this process to start to think about why we're doing what we're going to do before we start that design. So like I said, we're not going to have any drawings, but we really spent a lot of time talking about what's important to the community. So we started that process by looking at some, asking questions. So instead of answers, we really wanted to start asking some questions. We did some surveys of all staff. We got 100% participation from staff, which is really fantastic. I don't think we've ever gotten that before. And what we found generally, you can look at the individual information up there, but generally this space, they're succeeding, but the spaces are very limiting in how the future of education and what the future of education looks like to staff. And so we heard that pretty much across the board. And our goal in this was to say, okay, well, what does that mean? How do we adjust to that moving forward? So the second piece that we looked at was, we started to ask students what they thought. And we worked with actually Chimzon and through the CAPS program to lead a, kind of a survey of students, and he was, did a great job. He was a great kid to work with. And it was a great opportunity for us to hear what students thought about education and learning into the future, and how they're experiencing it today. And I think what we found is that those kids are really learning in a different way, or they want to learn in a different way, and they see it happening differently. And I think one example of that in the survey is that 79% of the kids don't use their lockers. And I would say 50% don't know where their lockers are, even. So that's one example, and it's a little bit silly, but the students really are looking for collaborative kind of experiences. They want to be engaged in learning, and that's something we heard loud and clear through the survey.
Could you back up one slide, if that's okay? Because I think it was important, too, as we surveyed staff, there was one of those little bullet points that talked about the number of staff members. One more back, I apologize. It's the bottom middle that talked about innovation, that 89% of teachers indicated that new spaces would enable them to be more innovative. Because right now, our spaces really don't allow some of the practices, some of the collaboration that we would hope to have with our collaborative teams and the tremendous teachers that we have. It's the space allocations and how those spaces are able to be utilized. And I think that's very much noticed by a lot of different people.
Yeah, almost across the board. It was in the 80s in terms of spaces limiting what they can do. They do feel like they're succeeding, but they're certainly being limited. And I think as we look and have discussions about the future of education, there is a lot of concern about how this building supports that. So the discovery activities, we call it Insight Week, and we spent four days at the high school. That means three days of school lunches with 200 kids. So it was entertaining. But it's really about deep engagement, not just with staff and not just with students, but community. We brought in members of the city. We brought in members from UNI, representation from administration, from about any club or group that you guys have in the school. We talked to them through interviews and found out what was important to them and what their concerns were about the future of education in Cedar Falls. So that's just a brief kind of shot of that four-day kind of schedule that we had. We had some tours. One of the other interesting things we did was just, we kind of walked in. I got to go to physics class, which was interesting, and sit in. We sat in on two or three classes, just to see kind of how teaching is happening, to see how passing periods happen, how kids come in the building, how comes kids come out of the building, and how they transition between periods. And there was a lot of interesting kind of things that we get out of that that will reflect in the design as we move forward. So one of the first things that we did was engage, we called it a salon dinner, and we had kind of community leaders at a dinner, and we asked some very simple questions. We asked three questions that you see up there. What the future of learning is, what? What would it take to get this right at Cedar Falls? And what would it mean if we did? And we have some, lots of good information from that exercise, and we got lots of good engagement with those key leaders. I think what we heard was optimism about the future and concern about kind of where, how the building supports that future in our current circumstances, in a nutshell. And so we can get you some more detailed information, but in general, that's what we, that's what we heard, I would say. Do you have any, I see him anything to add to that? And I thought that was the crux of what we heard.
Great dialogue, great discussion. Really, that focus, again, as Mr. Leeper said, was how do we make sure that we're focusing on the future, knowing that we have some constraints with our facilities? I think people are eager and understand what it takes to have students be successful looking into the future, but also the fact that there's a need to invest in that education to help students be successful.
You go back to that slide? There it is. So these are just some of the exercises, and we got silly sometimes, but really, it's about engaging. We use a series of discovery kind of exercises to get people to start to talk about what the future is and what it looks like. We even got some Legos out at a certain point, which brought some fun to the groups. But again, we met with department heads and lots of different kind of groups to get those, that feedback. A few of the quotes that we pulled out of the week was, "Learning is no longer limited by time and space." These are things that we found were interesting over the week. "The world has changed, and this building will not allow us to do some of these things that we need to do in the future." Students, a lot of students talked about engagement, I would say, and that learning is fun when we see it reasoned, want to learn. I think we've seen that and we heard that in the expansion of the CAPS program as an engaged style of learning. And I think there's a thirst that we heard out there for that, and the building is limiting some of those possibilities. And then providing kind of intense and personal interactions. So levels of change, we talked about this a little bit. The first example is, you know, it's easy to build a building that's a new version of today, right? That's a shinier, cleaner, new systems, right? And we wanted to do more than that as we started to have a discussion. We wanted to start to look at the second level of kind of improved processes for teaching and learning. We wanted that this process impacts our programming, how we move forward in terms of teaching and learning. And finally, the next step of engagement, we really liked the idea of this is a real community engagement. It's an opportunity to rethink community engagement. Most of the people that come into the building probably stop at the lobby on either door that they go into, or the gym. And how do we make this a community asset? And the little, we cannot become what we need to be by remaining what we are. It was on one of the file cabinets in one of the teachers' offices that we found. It was interesting. So over this week, we, four days, we talked to 200, over 250 people in the community. And the idea is to get kind of one goal and evaluate, what is the current status of education at Cedar Falls High School, and then what does the future look like? And so what we do as the next step is to kind of summarize those things as a series of drivers. And so one of those, we had three, and they have a lot of sub-points that you can look at later, but one was the idea of connectedness. The high school very much was siloed into, is siloed into compartments, and there's not really a kind of heart to it, and how those spaces kind of connect. So that's something that was important to everyone. Community and co-location, it was important that this school is, we started to talk about the idea, I think somebody, I can't remember who it was in the community, said, what if we thought about this building, not as a school that community uses, but as a community building that the school uses? So what does that mean, and what does that look like as we think about design moving forward? And the other is just diversity, and that's about the similar kinds of spaces. You have a lot of the same kinds of spaces in the high school, and that's traditional of a 1950s kind of school, right? I mean, that's what they, that's what they look like. There were boxes for learning. And we heard a lot of concerns about, maybe that's different moving forward as things change. So we're starting, the next step is to start to look at strategy. We're starting to compile some information on the existing building and the new site and look at what those possibilities are in the future. And so that's that strategy section. We call this first piece discovery. Strategy will start to think about some of the opportunities and limitations on the existing high school and the new site, kind of moving forward. So Doug gave me five minutes, and I think I took a few more, so shut up.
We know one of the aspects or questions is next steps. And throughout Insight Week, we brought in quite a few people, from our community, from staff, from students, from business and industry leaders, to be able to have a dialogue. We certainly wanted to have this first with the school board, but we want to come back to those members of Insight Week fairly soon to be able to have that next level of conversation, to be able to provide to them those design drivers as well. We also know that we'll have Envision back to the board table sometime here, probably within the next month or so, to talk about some of the data as far as what does it look like for, you know, renovation of the current building as far as costs and associated costs, especially as we look at potential apples to apples, knowing that we have 50 acres of land that we just purchased, but what would it take to be able to turn the current building into a 21st century building? And those cost numbers are really extraordinary when you start looking at what that would mean. Just so that is something that the board is well aware of when somebody might bring that up, but just so everybody in our community is aware, too, that, you know, this is a decision that's been long in the making to be able to uncover what's best for students as we look at the why, and how this is important not only for this current generation, but future generations, but also the, just the cost comparative, so we can understand the rationale and the reason behind it.
I would say I appreciate the commitment by the community. It was very important for them to, to not have this be what Johnston is doing or what Waaki is doing. And we really, it was very important to the community groups that we talked to about finding out what the Cedar Falls way is. And I think we want to be very intentional about that moving forward.
Questions for Brad? Thoughts?
I would just thank you for that, the thoughtful approach that you're taking and for not jumping right into sketches, but this initial process is so important for people to feel like they're being heard and that this really is something that will belong to everyone.
Yeah, and those drivers are things that we, we're not just going to file away on a shelf. Those are really going to push and drive design, and we're going to act as a check for us moving forward to see and test whether we've done those things.
And I appreciate the fact that as we've gone through different meetings, Eric, Joyce, Jeff, other members of the cabinets, high school administration, really have been deeply involved with the process. So we appreciate that greatly.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll look forward to hearing from you again.
I'll be right back.
Thank you, Brad. Okay. Moving on now to item E, the approval of the substantial completion of the Robinson Dresser baseball field improvement. Mr. Nevsker.
Thank you. If we want to pop that up on the screen, the baseball field, the, was, if the board will recall, was basically two separate contracts. One was for the actual grading of the baseball field and rebuilding of it, and a second contract was for the replacement of the exterior lighting. What we have in front of you tonight is the final summary for the grading of the project. Just a reminder, it was awarded to Peters Construction. The original contract was for $593,300. And then by the time you put equipment and design and some contingency money in there, we were at $690,843. You can see that we had one small change order during the project, and then we had a DNR Stromwater permit that we had to put in for professional design, it'd come in slightly less than estimated. So the net result is that the project did come in under budget by just a little over, if I can get to it here. Whoops. Was it 6,500?
600.
6686 dollars, I'm sorry. And so, we would recommend approval or acceptance of the project. And then when we receive the final invoicing for the lighting part of it, we'll bring that to you as well. I know that Musco does have to come back and do a minor adjustment on some aiming of the lighting, but otherwise, that's been completed. Talked to the baseball coach a couple of weeks ago. They've been very happy with the improvements to the site. And the kids also expressed their great gratitude for the improvements that we made to the site.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the completion of, substantial completion of the Robinson-Dresser baseball field?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept as complete the Robinson-Dresser baseball field improvements. All claims for materials furnished, labor performed, and/or services provided on this contract must be filed within the next 30 days.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Jeff. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to item F on the agenda, approval of the substantial completion of the Cedar Falls High School track resurfacing.
Well, as the board will recall, we had a situation where we just needed to do a resurface of the existing track at the high school due to safety concerns. And the track literally disintegrated in front of our eyes. We, the board awarded a contract to Midwest Tennis last spring, or excuse me, last winter, excuse me, and it was for $99,017. We did have one minor change order, which happened to be a deduct. And the professional design budget is slightly over, but that is due to some extra printing costs and some other things associated with that that are considered soft costs that weren't a part of the fee to do the work, in addition. So, when we were all done, we actually came in $5,500 under our original estimate of just a little over $120,000. Coaches seemed to be happy with the work. The work looks real good, and we would recommend a board acceptance of the project.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the completion of the Cedar Falls High School track resurfacing?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept as complete the high school track resurfacing project. All claims for materials furnished, labor performed, and/or services provided on this contract must be filed within the next 30 days.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Sasha. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Now, on to item G, the approval of the iPad bid.
And in your board packet, you'll see that we have a request for replacement iPads. This is a combination of a request to replace, we still have some Generation 1 iPads in the district, and we would like to replace those. Plus, we need additional iPad devices for the opening of Aldridge Elementary. This request is a part of the five-year tech plan that the board reviewed last spring. Of course, with Apple, you only have one option as to where to acquire them from. And so, the request is for 29 10-packs or 290 devices at a total cost of $85,260. Payment would come from the physical plan and equipment levy. And like I said, it is a part of the tech plan.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the iPad bid? Anyone?
So moved.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor. Any questions or comments I should ask first?
Just one comment that I'm familiar with the iPad ones and one of the reasons, even though they still might be functional, probably do not run some of the apps that we might have working right now, and the security would not be up to date on those either. But I assume we'll find a way to put those into service somehow or other. We have some very creative staff and students out there that will find a way to use those iPad ones. Is that correct?
Yes, we always do. Yes.
Good comment. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item H on the agenda, the discussion of the 2018-2019 legislative priorities. And Andy attached a copy of the Iowa School Board priorities.
Correct. So, within your packet, you will see the 2018 IASB legislative resolutions or priorities. There's a total of 30 of them. They ask that boards throughout the state of Iowa, school boards, review these, discuss these, and come up with no more than four areas that we believe are emphasis for the Cedar Falls Community School District. Later on this fall, we will select a delegate assembly member that will represent us at the delegate assembly at the national, or the annual conference in Des Moines. Just wanted to remind the board that last year, we selected two that we felt were high priority for us as a school district. That was number 27, which is the one cent sales tax extension to either, A, eliminate the sunset completely of that one cent sales tax, or extend that out for an additional 20 years. We know that that passed the House this past year, 95 to 3. Was certainly both parties supporting that. Then it was held up in the Senate within the last day or two of the legislative process. And again, I think we've talked about that quite a bit, and we think that was somewhat tied to vouchers towards the end of the session and didn't come out of the Senate. So, we know their support. I've talked to several of the legislators, and they've said that that is something they believe will be on the docket and pass out of the next session here coming up. However, we do know how important that is for Cedar Falls and certainly the work that we know we have to be able to accomplish over the course of the next several months, several years, as we look at our high school facilities and the needs that are there. The second item that we had as far as a priority or a resolution was number 28, and that is the bond issues. And that is to look towards the bond issues being what most elections are across the state of Iowa, a simple majority. That is something that has not been taken up at the legislative level, but it is something that's been talked about through several different channels, several different groups, and something that I know has been a discussion at Iowa Association of School Boards. Again, it's two different pathways we can take with this. Number one, we can have an opportunity for people to kind of discuss and talk about tonight and then bring back two to three that they think are most important for the next board meeting and decide then. Or we can collectively look and decide what we think is most important with the discussion tonight. Either one is appropriate. We need to have these turned in by middle of August to the IASB to ensure that we at least have those noted prior to the delegate assembly.
Any feelings about the two that we picked last year? I still feel are very appropriate for this upcoming session. The other one, I think that we should maybe take a look at, and I think it might be a good idea to bring it back when the full board is here in, at our first meeting in August. But just the lack of supplemental state aid. Just, I mean, I know that's beating a dead horse, but I feel like we need to continue to keep that up and front and center when it comes to education. Thoughts about others?
I agree that all three of those are very important. And I was curious about number 19 as well, school funding policy, which, you know, we passed a resolution this past year stating our support for the current funding, you know, scenario. And we're unanimous in our disapproval of school vouchers or ESAs. And this, to me, seems like a way to kind of formalize that, you know, as a legislative priority if we supported that, that issue as well. So, just to throw that out there.
And I think that's very appropriate. We can actually add, there's usually a space that we can say, "We want to have a new priority." And that priority is that we support public dollars going for public education in the state of Iowa. And that is not one of the priorities, but that's something that's come up recently as far as a legislative discussion that we obviously have taken action on as a school board with that resolution, but also something that we can certainly advocate for as a priority, not only for the platform next year, but well into the future.
That'd be more explicit than, yeah, than, than supporting this one, I suppose.
They do, I'm sorry. They do address the voucher issue under number 29 at the end.
Can you read that?
Sure. It says, you know, "Under expanding educational opportunities, they support opportunities for continued collaboration between public and non-public schools. However, the association opposes the use of additional taxpayer funds for the creation of vouchers or educational savings accounts, or an increase in tax credits or deductions directed toward non-public schools."
I didn't catch that one. That's...
I think they cover a lot in 29, though, so I think to keep it simple would be better. I mean, they're talking about charter schools and online schools and magnet schools and
Right.
and then vouchers. So, you know, I think maybe a more simplistic.
Okay.
That would just be my comment about 29. I have a quick question about 15, the alternative licensure. And it's basically, I mean, it almost seems like it's kind of almost coming in from a community college perspective, where if someone has, you know, so many hours of expertise in an area, rather than have to go through a teacher program, you can award them, you know, a position based on some of that. I mean, does that have any weight or interest from districts? I mean, given some of the ways we're changing education through CAPS and things like that, it seems that you're going to start to maybe capture some of those kinds of areas where their work in a field is going to be possibly as applicable, if not more, than maybe going to have gone through, you and I, through an education program or something. So, where do you see that going as we're changing kind of how we're looking at some of our educational opportunities?
Yeah, yes. That's a, seems like a very simplistic question, but it's a very in-depth answer and process. When I served as the chairman of the Board of Educational Examiners, that was something that we really focused on in depth because we wanted to open up licensure pathways and opportunities to make sure that individuals that had a passion for teaching, but also had the expertise in some areas of pedagogy or content, could flow into the teaching profession. One of the challenges with that also is the fact that it is kind of an art more than a science. So, you want to make sure people understand what it means to have those interrelationships with students and what that means within classroom dynamics. And sometimes, individuals that have the passion don't have the skill set necessarily to do what it takes to be a successful teacher. So, there's a balance there. The one area that I'm inquisitive about with this one is the reciprocity agreements because that sounds very, again, simplistic in nature. But there are some states that allow individuals with a high school diploma to be able to teach in classrooms. And I think the state of Iowa has always said, "We have very high levels of expectations." We know we have tremendous staff and teachers across our state, and we don't want to have maybe individuals that don't have that high level of expectation or experience to work directly with students in that capacity. I think the BOE has done a pretty good job of opening up alternative pathways for those that are, have a BA and especially in those hard to teach, hard to get teacher areas, similar to science, technology, STEM areas. And actually, we've hired, oh, probably three or four people in the last four to five years that have gone through some alternative pathways. And that was a goal and has been a goal of the BOE because, again, it's so important to get individuals that want to teach, have the experience to teach, but also then understand the science of teaching, the art of teaching, to have that impact.
And I don't think it's something we need to focus on right now. I think it is important to really narrow our focus so they know what's important to us, like we did last year. So, I just found that kind of interesting as we look at some of these other opportunities we're going to offer to our students, so.
So, why don't we come back at our next board meeting then? And we'll choose three or four and narrow that one down and see what Jeff and Susie have to say about this, too. And then we can move it forward.
And I'll draft a potential voucher language, if that's okay?
Sure.
As far as what a platform or at least what a component could look like.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
I also want to point out that these are legislative priorities, that we are not endorsing any candidates at this point and will not as a school board. I do believe it's our responsibility to vet those people that are running. And as individuals, if we feel that they would make good candidates for office, that we should do everything we can to support them. The same would be true of Iowa Association of School Boards, that they are not, as a group, endorsing any candidates.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you. All right. Moving on now to the approval of the board policies. This will be the first reading of two.
Correct. So, we have a PowerPoint presentation on some of these, very high level. Each of these are in your board packet. And again, always want to start with what is our vision, which is every student, every day. But we do have a policy review cycle. We go through, it's a requirement that every five years that we review every one of our policies. That does not stop us from, as new code changes occur, new practices occur, that we will review and embed new policies or revise policies as needed. But you can see here, this is the cycle that we have. This current school year obviously is the 2000, well, we're actually doing our 600 and 700, so that shows five years from now when we want to review those again. Next year, we'll review the 800, 900, and 1,000 series, 2018-19 school year. And we'll go back through the cycle with 1, 200, and 300 series the following year. But very important for everybody to understand, we review these, we go through the process. We have a policy committee that we meet with and talk through some of these changes, as well as go through our school attorney, as well as different multiple communication components to ensure that these are fit on best practice, follow Iowa code, but also in the best interest of all of our students, our constituents across our community. So, as we went through the 600 and 700 policies to review this current school year, and again, I'm going to go through these at a very high level. If they are not listed here, then we are recommending that we keep the current language within those board policies. So, 602.21, this is a policy that is focused on the post-secondary education, concurrent enrollment. And the language that we had, we recommended to strike all the language and then insert the new Iowa Association of School Boards language. That is now updated with new Iowa code language and interpretation on what concurrent enrollment looks like in post-secondary education. So, there is then an addendum, 602.21.1, which is a brand new. And that just updates to talk about with courses that are concurrent enrollment courses that students may choose to take in a variation other than on our campus through our teachers that teach those courses. Textbook will not be covered if it's taken off-campus, online, or in a different version than, other than our, within our classrooms. 603.4 is an update with new Iowa Association of School Board language. And again, recommended through their attorneys to be able to make sure that we do update that appropriately. 604.2, and again, going through these at a very high level, is another one that has been updated with additional Iowa Association of School Board language. We did go through this component with our policy committee. And I am trying to remember, 604.2 focuses on the comprehensive health program. And we had to add in three different strands as far as what we utilize for our comprehensive health program that we have across our pre-K-12 curriculum. 605.4 is, again, updating with current practice and Iowa Association of School Board language. And that is our electronic technology acceptable use by students. We wanted to make sure that we updated that to ensure that the current practice that we have to teach proper use of technology, to make sure that we are teaching digital citizenship appropriately, that that's been updated with the language that we currently use across our district, and also aligns with the Iowa Association of School Boards' updated language. The 700 series policy, there was one policy recommendation for a change, and that is what we utilize for construction bidding, construction... change, and that is what we utilize for construction bidding, construction purchasing and procedures, and non-construction purchasing and procedures. In essence, as, as we've always tried to do across all of our policies, we put superintendent to designate, but then we also struck, per ISAB, the dollar amount for maximums and minimums, and, and simply put in their minimum or maximum statutory threshold. What they've been doing recently is for minimums and maximums, they've been varying that sometimes year to year, but also depending on the size of the school district, number of students served. It's easier, instead of trying to change that on an annual basis or every two years, to say, "We're going to be matching that with the minimum and maximum threshold limits set by state law." So before we move into the other policies, I guess, are there questions about the 600 and 700 policies? I didn't read all those to you.
I have a quick question on one that we didn't make changes to. For our physical education policy, do we follow, is it a state requirement that we are following, or are these Cedar Falls requirements for students having to take PE all through high school?
So there are offer and teach requirements, and there is a PE component that's a requirement for graduation for, for physical education in the state. We do allow exemptions, so there's not a requirement for exemptions in the state. However, if you do have exemptions, students have to be able to be involved in the physical activity to offset the Iowa code requirement for the number of graduation requirements for PE.
So my question is, and I've kind of brought this up, you know, as my kids have gone through school, first of all, we have so many kids who are involved in outside-of-school extracurriculars, I mean soccer, baseball, whatever, that they may not be meeting it because they're involved in a school sanctioned sport, but they are more than meeting it outside of school. And my, my question comes from, is we are opening up caps to, you know, right now, because of the graduation requirements, you know, it's difficult for our students to really get to caps until they're maybe juniors and possibly seniors. And if you want to throw language in there, I mean, we just have so many academic opportunities for kids that our schedule, the way it's structured right now within the school day, it is hard to get everything in that you want to get in. So by saying that you either have to be in a sport, or you have to have a full academic calendar, I mean, we have so many, we were just talking about concurrent courses, we have so many college courses available to kids. So to say that, you know, we can't exempt them from PE and offer them a study hall until they have booked every single day, period of their day, if a student is taking three college courses, you know, I find, I would find a study hall for them to be able to maybe have a break, or just catch up on homework, or go get assistance from a teacher. And I know we have Power Hour, but if students are in a caps program, they're leaving campus to go over to caps. So I, you know, I think an hour in our school day is pretty valuable time. And not that, I'm, I'm not saying PE is not valuable. I think we have great opportunities for our kids, and we have really interesting PE opportunities, but to me, it, you know, it should be an option for kids to partake in, rather than a requirement necessarily. So I, I do, I would like some conversation about whether that is something we still want to impose upon kids, just given all the opportunities that they have available to them. If they participate in caps, it's half their day. And if they're trying to do a foreign language to meet their college requirement, you know, so they don't have to take it in college, I mean, then you throw math and science in there, and there just is such little space for them to be able to do everything. Don't even talk about band or chorus or anything else. So I guess I would just like to hear the board and what they kind of feel about, you know, requiring this and what the current exemptions allow for.
The, the challenge, and I, I think a lot of people would say, you know, as long as kids are being active and healthy, it'd be great to be able to count those outside experiences. We, we not only run into the Iowa code requirements, and again, they're, they don't require exemptions. We, we allow exemptions in Cedar Falls for students that are involved with school activities. That way, we know what kind of level of activity they're having and, and the physical exertion that might come with that, because we all agree that kids need to be healthy and certainly active. The other component of this is the federal level. There's the Healthy Kids Act that was imposed about five or six years ago, that, that really focuses on the, the amount of minutes and, and not necessarily at the secondary level, this is focused at the elementary level, that students have to be actively in motion, either through physical activity or through their recess times. So I think, really, we would be in violation of some of the federal requirements and state requirements, because we have to have those physical PE time dedicated for students. We try to make it as, as simplistic as possible with those exemptions. And being, and looking at a lot of different policies across the state, there's not many districts that allow academic exemptions, and, and we certainly try to accommodate that for one semester, especially with full class loads. I think the, the challenge now is, and the opportunity, is how do we come up with ways that we can provide that maybe a little bit more uniquely, so we free up some of those periods, what we call during the traditional day. And I think there's some options there, especially as we look at flexibility and trying to make sure we're doing what's best for students, what's best for staff, what's best for our community as a whole.
I mean, and maybe it's just even redefining what a full schedule looks like. I mean, having one study hall, to me, I mean, they have to have everything booked. One study hall, to me, is, you know, if you have a student who's involved in anything outside of school or working, you know, having a study hall during the day is a pretty important thing. So I would just hate, I would hate to have them have to be making choices or missing out on other opportunities, just because the way our policy is written. So I, I mean, I feel kind of strongly about it. Not trying to take anyone's, I just think it offers them more choice, you know. It's, it's, as long as we're meeting the federal requirements, and if maybe by changing that, we aren't meeting that, I mean, I think that's an important consideration. But if we can make this so that our students have more choice, I'm always about giving them more choice, especially at these, at this age, they should be able to make those choices, you know. That's, they want to do what's engaging to them, what they're passionate about, and I think there are times that they are not able to do those things, just because of the way our schedule works.
I would also like to hear from our own classroom experts and see what our physical education department would say about what standards and objectives would they be meeting in some of these innovative areas, and what ones might we need to supplement a little bit before we started to make that decision. I think we'd.
Absolutely.
Exactly. And I think it's important to understand that, you know, the, the state is pretty concrete about what is required for offer and teach. PE is a scope, a part of that. You know, we would have some students or families that would say, "I understand that we have to have four years of English to graduate from high school, but it'd be nice, because it's not necessarily an area we're going into, or because we have a full schedule, maybe we can exempt out of that fourth year of English, or maybe the third year of math requirements." And, you know, we, we can double-check to make sure that our attorney has the same interpretation. But again, once you start trying to maneuver or take away some of those offer and teach requirements and sequences that, that the state requires, you get into a pretty slippery slope, and certainly something that we would not want to be out of compliance with. So I would recommend approving it as it is, but then we can certainly look into whether or not there's some flexibility. I think having the conversation with our staff is, is important. You know, I, I know our, our physical education staff would say, one of the most important aspects for students to have success, as far as their academic success, would be having that opportunity for activity and movement within the, the school day throughout the school year. And there's certainly data that supports that. It's that balancing of, of, I think what Jenny's talking about, with the, the full schedules and, and trying to look at students' activities that they may be involved with as well.
Do you know exactly what policy number that, that is?
602.16.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, it's fine. I just.
And I would think clarification between what, what is required by the state and what we're, if we are requiring anything in addition to that, I would appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, we can do that. Please keep.
Good. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the first of two readings for the 600, 700, well, they, I'm going to just say, the policies listed?
Yes, I apologize, but we still have a few more that we need to go through. Those are just the 600 and 700.
Oh, we've got 900, sorry.
Yeah, so we have, we have three more.
Drop the gun.
So, and that's okay. So the 600 and 700 policy are part of our, our annual review. We, we have a couple more, just because of, of updates that we needed to accomplish to make sure that we're aligned with providing what we needed to provide for, for, for staff, as well as for the future, as we look at potential naming rights. So for 2.2s, vacations and holidays, we wanted to update this policy with our current practices, make sure we provide clarity, make sure that we do codify the, the languages that either are or were within some of our collective bargaining agreements as well. That way, everybody knows exactly what that looks like. Everybody either, A, has additional or better vacations and holidays, or maintained what was currently in place because of, of, again, we wanted to put that into policy. 402.3, once again, is an update to make sure that our leaves of absences policy was updated with our current practices and to make sure that we provided clarity. We did make some, some tweaks and changes to this to ensure, again, we used to have a, a kind of a five-step process for people to accumulate sick leave. We wanted to make sure that that was more simplistic and unified across different groups, so that goes down to a three cycle. So actually, people can accumulate sick leave quicker than what they could have otherwise. But we also wanted to make sure that we clarified that our certified teaching staff, per collective bargaining agreements in the past, had those 20 days of sick, personal illness days. So we had that in code, so that was clearly articulated within the, the board policies as well. So really, again, those were cleanup to make sure that we fit those with current practice, but also provide that clarity, and to make sure that we had that within policy to clarify what that looked like and what that was. The last policy is a policy that is a new policy. This is not Iowa Association of School Boards, but it's a policy on naming rights. We have not had a policy on naming rights for school district facilities and/or owned property. And we wanted to add something that provided clarity. Number one, naming rights in consideration, so recognizing the contribution of, of an individual. Typically, that's done for athletic facilities or athletic complexes, complexes. We also wanted to make sure we, we had dialogue and discussion on naming rights and recognition. As we look at potential opportunities in the future, what does it mean for naming rights for an auditorium, or a lobby, or something else? We wanted to make sure we put that into language of board policy, so we could clarify that process, as well as to make sure that we, we had a consistent process as we looked to the future. I'm done.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading, first of two readings?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the first reading of board policy series 600, 700, and board policies 402.2, Vacation and Holidays, 402.3, Leaves of Absence, 602.21.1, Concurrent Enrollment Textbook, and 904.1, Building and Site Naming Rights as Presented. Upon approval, policies will be in effect as of July 1st, 2018.
Thank you, Sasha. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded by Jeff Corvus. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Will these be posted in a place where public has access to them and can see them beforehand? And where would that be?
It's on our website. It's all underneath of our board documentation. It's all listed there.
So before they're approved, though, they'll be out to the public, so they can see them as they're.
Correct. They're posted now.
Thank you.
They were posted on Friday.
Okay.
Good question. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to item J, the approval of the superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion to approve this contract?
I move that the Board of Education of the Cedar Falls Community School District issue a three-year contract to Andrew R. Patti as superintendent of schools with a salary of $195,943 for the first year of the contract, $3,500 in district car allowance, and standard district administrative benefit package.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments regarding this? The one thing that I would say is that all of our administrators have chosen, or this, for this year, there has not been any increase in their salary. Dr. Patti followed that same consideration, and the board accepted that. And I should say, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but you can chime in anywhere, that we do appreciate your leadership. We feel that you have guided us in a direction that we want to go. You keep us focused on the big rocks, and we appreciate that. I know that we've had a lot of things going on when it comes to caps and our professional learning communities, and our standards-based grading, and planning for a new high school, planning for elementary and two remodels. You know, we have, we initiated Parent University, which is a great way to engage our community and our parents. And I'll open it up for comments.
Yes, thank you.
We'd all, I think, echo the same thing, that we do appreciate your leadership, and, and Cedar Falls is lucky to have a great superintendent.
We have great people across our community. I know I say this quite frequently. I'm a very small cog in, in that organization and the entire system, and certainly just honored to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I would say that, you know, for our administrative staff to do this is, I mean, they're recognizing the situation that we're facing with the state aid. I mean, I think it's a reluctance acceptance on our behalf, because we, number one, know we have great administrators. We want to keep great administrators, and we need to make sure we're keeping their salaries competitive across the state. So, you know, it's, it's accepted this year, but we, we do have to make sure, we're reviewing that every year, to make sure that we are remaining competitive, so that we can keep the people that we have who are, as Joyce said, leading us in the right direction, so.
Thank you, Jenny.
I just add one comment as well. Mrs. Coyle, I didn't know what the recommendation was going to be on the superintendent's contract, which is entirely appropriate, but from my memory, which is not perfect, I rely on the secretary, Ms. Tenevka. I believe the superintendent has recommended a, a freeze in his salary on at least two prior occasions since he was first hired into the district. So what he's recommending, what you're accepting this year, is also something that he's done previously, which I think is highly commendable.
Great reminder. Yes, Adrian, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Thank you.
Okay, moving on now to item K, superintendent's report.
Yes, really only one item on the superintendent's report, and that is just the board calendar. It's within your, your packet. This is more informational than anything. We'll continue to fill this out as we look at some of the information reports that we'll have coming up over the next fiscal year. But in school year, you will see that the dates for school board meetings are the same. As we look at the second and fourth Monday of the school year, there are some exceptions within that, as you will see. We only have one meeting scheduled in December. We have one meeting scheduled in March. We start to, to look at May meetings as necessary. And then, again, as we get closer to next year, we'll have to talk about the July meeting, when we'll hold that. Typically, we, we always have that reserved for the second, or excuse me, the third Tuesday of the month, knowing that City Council meets on the first Monday and the third Monday. And this typically is the, the scheduled time where we can reserve the chamber. Again, this is more informational than anything, but wanted to make sure that those dates were placed into calendars, and we looked at what might be coming up for those agenda items, especially informational reports.
As you look at the information reports, if, if you have any suggestions or something that you want to know more about, or we've got some empty spaces here, please reach out to Andy and just share with him your ideas or thoughts about some of those informational meetings.
I think one of the, one of the ones that we will have, we just haven't found where it's going to fit yet, especially with the, the new state science standards. We will have our science pre-K-12, K-12 teachers come to be able to talk about the implementation of those standards, because that's going to be a fairly large component this year as we look towards that implementation.
Andy, just a quick question. I see Iowa Assessment is on there for October.
Yep.
What, where do we stand with that as a state? Because hasn't the old test, I mean, is it not done?
It is. So this spring will be the first year that we are providing So this spring will be the first year that we are providing the new assessments. Did not receive this from the Department of Education, but I think I read this online, that the Iowa Testing Center, ACT, out of the University of Iowa, just recently contracted with Pearson to be able to create the new exam. So that has not been created yet. We will start to provide that assessment this upcoming spring, spring of 2019. We hope that there's going to be some beta testing and some potential opportunities to kind of review that and what that looks like, but as of now, that's still in design.
And the legislature did end up disregarding the.
Smarter Balance.
Correct. So the, and the acronym is AIR, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was the Smarter Balanced Assessment that was approved.
Approved by the task force, correct.
Exactly. The task force said that that was the best assessment, focused and aligned with the Iowa Corps. This last legislative session, they said that we would be mandated to go through the ACT or the Iowa assessment. One stipulation, I believe, was that it had to be aligned with the Iowa Corps, and I think that's why they now have contracted with Pearson to help create that assessment.
Will they still call it the Iowa assessment?
You know, I do not believe they will, but I'm not sure what the new name is. I know that there's been some discussion about that, and I think that's probably going to come out through the process of creating the assessment. I know that there has been some rebranding, renaming discussion, I just don't know where that's at now.
Like, I believe Iowa assessment might have been trademarked by ACT, so my bet is they probably will not use that again.
I don't think so.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else to, questions or comments or discussion from board members? All right.
Yes, and at this time, this ends our scheduled broadcast for the school board meeting. We do have a work session on our book study following the meeting here. There is no further action that will be taken except adjournment. So we will kind of reconvene here in about a minute and finish up our book study, which is our grading from the inside out.